Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Here.
Alderman Suffertin.
Here.
Alderman Revelle.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Fleming.
All right, terrific. We have seven of our members here. I know the other two had commitments where they couldn't be back in time. And so, welcome to the January 8th, 2018 meeting of the Evanston City Council, our first meeting of the new year. I hope everyone had a wonderful holiday season. We have a lot of work to do this coming year. Just a big, big thank you for the folks at Interfaith Action who have been working with our homeless population to give them a warm place to sleep when it's been 15 degrees or below. And I was out Saturday night at First United with them, and they do some pretty amazing work here in the community. One of the things that they have a need for is overnight volunteers. So if there's anyone that is listening or out there in the audience that wants to do something in this regard, Interfaith Action could really use additional volunteers to sleep overnight with the folks. So with that, that's the only announcement I have for this evening. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, good evening. Two things. First, Martin Luther King Birthday celebrations are coming up, starting this Saturday, January 13th, the city's recognition, a day of celebration in Evanston Unity Event at noon at Fleetwood Jordan Center, 1655 Foster Street. Another large event happening then on Monday, I believe, the Y O U event at Evanston Township High School. Northwestern University is having a day of service on the 19th. There are several other events, so we would encourage folks, if they can, to come to the city's event on January 13th. You can go to our website, cityofevanston.org/mlK for a full listing of all of the events going on in Evanston to honor Dr. King. Next, I'd like to ask Aneth Sanchez to come to the podium.
As I think many of the council members are aware, Aneth is leaving us. She is finishing her tour as a Local Government Management Fellow with us and relocating with her husband to the San Francisco Bay area. They're going to be living in wine country. Yountville, I guess, is where your husband will be working, and we're working hard to find a great position for you somewhere in that environment. As you know, one of her responsibilities has been to come to every one of the city council meetings and provide staff support, does a morning-after review of what the council has been up to. She's also been very active in our Latino outreach efforts that we've done over the past couple of years, worked on a number of special projects. So we will miss you very much, and on behalf of your colleagues here at the city of Evanston, we want to present you with a small token of appreciation to thank you for your service. Congratulations. Best wishes.
So to make this short, when I arrived in Evanston the first day, Wally told me you had to stay for city council tonight. And he introduced me, and I was like, what is city council? Do I have to say something? But now I can prepare, since I wrote at least two sentences. So thank you, Wally, and thank you, Erica, for being such great role models and mentors. I've really learned a lot, and I am appreciative and blessed that I was able to start my career here in Evanston. I learn a lot from your community. So thank you so much for investing in young people like me and ICMA. Please continue to do so. And I really enjoy my time here, and Evanston will always hold a good place in my heart. Thanks.
That concludes my announcements.
All right. Thank you, Aneth, for everything. City Clerk Reed, do you have any announcements?
I have no announcements, just Happy New Year to everyone. And we're going to miss the folks that are leaving.
All right, great. Thank you. Okay, we move on to the public comment section. As everybody knows, we have three minutes per person that's set aside. If we have less than 15 people, we have less than 15 people tonight. We have five people signed up. We have Claire Kelly, Darlene Cannon, James Engelman, Betty Esther, and Tina Payden. Those are the folks that have signed up. And as always, I just ask you to be respectful of the time limit, and if you get up on your three minutes, I'll just give you a nudge to wrap it up in 10 seconds or so. So first speaker is Claire Kelly, then we'll have Darlene Cannon, then James Engelman. All right, so if Claire Kelly's not here, we're going to move on. Is Darlene Cannon here? She went home too. All right, James, you're here. All right, come on up.
I'd like you to approve that land at 2525 Church Street, the Shore Scoop property for this wing garden. It sounds like it's going to be a beautiful thing for the kids and for the elders, because I remember, I'm from Chicago, and we used to have ocean rugs. They used to have a water fountain and one outside of their plants, and it was very beautiful. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you, James. Betty Esther? Is Betty here?
I'm sorry, I forgot to wish all of you a Happy New Year.
Thank you.
But first, I would like to invite all of you and the community to the fourth in a series of our Police Oversight and Accountability Board Proposal Review, which is happening this Thursday, January 11th, at Family Focus Center at 2010 Dewey at 7:00 P.M. We hope you will come out. The Citizen Network of Protection proposal is not anti-comp. In fact, our proposal would provide more safeguard for police officers than what is currently in place. It is created to protect both the citizen and the police officer in the area of complaint and community outreach. For this to happen, there has to be transparent accountability, which at the present time is not something that is taking place in the community policing. The action of the police department, meaning Evanston Police Department, in putting individual citizens on a gang list that does not offer due process when the gang database is only updated every five years. How can that be fair to the 450 individuals on this current list? This is another in a long line, long list of behavior by the Evanston Police Department that calls for a Police Oversight Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Esther. Tina Payden was our last speaker.
Good evening, Mayor, City Manager, City Clerk, and City Council. My name is Tina Payden, and I'm talking about affordable housing and Airbnb. As you all know, we have 15 affordable units. Out of the 23 available units that we have, we house 53 people currently, affordable units. Yes, I would like to work with Alderman Rainey and her plan for the units. There are a lot of restrictions. I have to fill out a lot of paperwork. Currently, the landlord has the power. It's not like before when the housing market was good. We have the power. So landlords are not making a choice to take these programs, because we don't get any help, we don't get any money, so why would we take an agency where we have to fill out a lot of paperwork and not get what we want? So when you're discussing or making choices about programs, and as Alderman Simmons and Alderman Braithwaite, Nguyen and Wilson at one time, when you talk about assisting me, really make sure that that's what you're doing, not just saying it up in the front, because we need help. I need new roofs. I need new windows. And I cannot continue to take low rent, and I don't get any help. Also, as far as the Airbnb, there's no regulation. So why wouldn't I make my property Airbnb, because you don't regulate? I pay higher taxes, because my property is classed for rental. A home, or if somebody's renting out a room, they're not classed as rental, so they don't pay the higher taxes. There's no inspection. I didn't get the answer to that question in the last meeting, if Airbnb was inspected. Once again, I had 14 separate inspections at my properties last year. No Airbnb is inspected. They don't have to make sure that they have the appropriate smoke detectors, carbon monoxide, and life safety, especially with a lot of buildings, because people are heating their units with the stove and fires. So I'm held to a much higher standard than an Airbnb. There's no occupancy requirement. You don't follow up. You don't inspect. So how is that fair to someone who's doing the right thing? And I spend a lot of time and money on the properties, fixing it up and trying to make it available for families, and I get thrown under the bus. Also, I wanted to say, so the housing people, Sarah Flax and the others, you need to talk to landlords like me to find out what's going on and what's happening. What are our needs? I also have one last comment. I was inspected a couple of years ago, and the inspector came in with a tape measure and inspected my property with a tape measure. Did anybody else get inspected with a tape measure to find out if I had the appropriate number of people in my unit? It does not apply to Airbnb or anything else that you pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes public comment. Thank you, everyone, for getting up and sharing your thoughts with the council. We're going to move on to the consent agenda this evening. Alderman Rainey, if you would take us through, oh, wait a second here. Alderman, yeah, you're APW. Yeah, if you would take us through Administration and Public Works, please.
I'll do the minutes.
And the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item is approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of December 11, 2017. Administration and Public Works Committee met this evening, and we ask you to approve the payroll November 27 through the 10th of December, $2,729,121.27 payroll through December 11 through December 24, $2,737,951.63. The bills list through January 9, 2018, the amount of $6,621,592.84. Credit card activity excluding Amazon and Sunshine transactions for the period ending November 30th, $157,991.71. I move approval for those items.
Second.
Oh, you can't.
She excluded.
She can. She can. She can second on this one.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So City Clerk, could you take the roll, please?
Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson. Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Suffertin.
Aye.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Okay, so on the consent agenda, M1, A1, A2, 1, pass 7 to 0. Alderman Rainey, A2, 2.
I probably should have done the anyway.
No, I think you did it right, and then we'll do A2, 2, and then we'll do A2, 3, and get back on it.
All right, so I'm going to move Amazon credit card activity ending November 30th in the amount of $11,314.94. Move approval.
Okay, City Clerk, could you take the roll?
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
All right, it passes A2.2, passes 6 to 0 with one abstaining, Alderman Suffertin abstaining. Alderman Rainey?
Yes. Sunshine Gospel Ministry transactions ending January 9, 2018, in the amount of $40,000. I move approval.
Second.
Well, City Clerk, could you take the roll, please?
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Suffertin.
Aye.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
All right, A2.3 passes the city council 6 to 0 with one abstention, and that's Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item A3.1 is a change order number four for Gibbs Morrison Site Improvement Project with Copenhaver Construction Incorporated. It extends the deadline from the 28th of December to June 15 with no additional project funding. This is for action.
Second.
That's a second. The city manager, we are requesting you approve the city manager to execute an extension of the intergovernmental agreement for 2018 refuse disposal fees for the Solid Waste Agency of Northern Cook County in the not-to-exceed amount of $750,000 for operations and maintenance transfer fees. Next, we ask your approval for authorization to execute an agreement with E-Town Tennis. This is an amended agreement for the City of Evanston Tennis Program to run through Chandler Newburger Community Center. The contract has been amended for two years with a mutual, with no additional renewal periods at this time. That is for action. Next is authorization for the city manager to renew the agreement with First Bank and, oh, this is off the consent agenda.
Yeah, please.
And will be addressed by the committee chair. Sorry about that. The next is a resolution, IR18, which requests that we adopt the City of Evanston Sexual Harassment Policy that conforms to the Illinois Public Act 10554, which mandates that all Illinois governmental units adopt by January 15, 2018, legislation that sets forth a policy prohibiting sexual harassment with numerous requirements. That's for action. We're requesting the council adopt Resolution 38R17, appointing Mayor Hagerty as Director on the Board of Directors of the Solid Waste Agency of Northern Cook County, and City Manager Bobquitz as the alternate director. For introduction this evening is Ordinance 202018, authorizing the city manager to execute a 50-year lease agreement with the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District of Greater Chicago for real property located at 2525 Church Street. The city will pay a $10 rent per year. This has been requested by Alderman Simmons, that we suspend the rules this evening and take action. Is everybody okay with that? Okay, moving right along. Ordinance 8018 is for introduction, and this is an ordinance that would amend Section 101116 of the city code to amend designated bike routes on Chicago Avenue, Sheridan Road, Sheridan Place, Yucatn Place, Ingleside Place, Central Street, Church Street, and Davis Street. The ordinance would amend the title of Schedule 16B1 and B2 to correct an error. Ordinance, that's for introduction. Ordinance 1018, amending the city code, Section 442, amendments requiring fire protection systems testing records on an annual basis. Currently, they are just received voluntarily. This is for introduction. We're asking the city council to adopt Ordinance 160017, amending Section 34-2 Hotel Motel and Vacation Rental Tax, which amends the tax to, that has to do with the way the tax is going to be collected on Airbnbs. It is, there are technical amendments to ease the tax collection process, and collection will commence on February 1, 2018. A10 is Ordinance 159017. It's for action and amend, no, this is off the consent agenda as it was passed for action at our last meeting. Sorry about that. That concludes Administration Public Works with the one exception.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Nguyen, can you take us through planning and development?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item P1, Vacation Rental License for 710 Madison Street, was held in committee at the request of Alderman Fleming. Item P...
Yeah, we can't hear you that well.
Sorry about that. Item P1, Vacation Rental License for 710 Madison Street, was held in committee at the request of Alderman Fleming. Item P2, Ordinance 3018, extension of time for applicant to obtain building permit to construct the planned development at 1815 Oak Street. I move approval for a one-year extension.
Do we want to go through? And we'll get a second to the whole, everything.
I'm sorry, this Alderman Braithwaite requested that we suspend the rules for this. And I'm sorry, Alderman Rainey, I don't know whether, I missed whether you made that request in the consent agenda for item P2. Okay.
All right, so P2 is for introduction and action tonight. We're just running through the consent agenda. Nobody's pulling it off. We'll keep going.
That's right. Okay. Sorry about that. Item P4 was held in...
I'm sorry, what about P3? Did we do P3, and I missed it?
No, P3 is fine. Yeah.
We held P3.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right. You're right, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Rainey and I held P3. Ordinance 401.
Okay, so that's held in committee. P3 is held in committee. Okay. Got it.
You know, I'm new around here. Item P4, Ordinance 5018, granting special use permit for a planned development located at 601 Davis Street, was tabled to a date certain of January 22nd at the request of the applicant.
Okay, great.
And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Alderman Nguyen. Alderman Braithwaite, can you take us through Human Services and Appointments?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move Ordinance 141-017, amending the definition of a food establishment, Title 8, Chapter 6, Section 2. That's for action. And the appointments for reappointment to the 9/11 Emergency Telephone System Board is Daniel Lipson. That's also for action.
Excellent. Do we have a second?
Second.
City Clerk, could you take the roll, please, on the consent agenda?
Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Suffertin.
Aye.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
All right, the consent agenda, as we went through it all, just passed 7 to 0. Okay, we had one item that was pulled off, A34. Alderman Rainey, can you take us through that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We're asking the council to authorize the manager to renew the agreement with First Bank and Trust to have access to a line of credit up to an amount of $2.2 million for the West Evanston Tax Increment Finance District, and establish a line of credit for $3 million for the Howard Ridge TIF. This is for action. I move approval.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Alderman Suffertin?
I'm just going to say respectfully, I disagree with the idea of having, using credit here. And since I voted against the Chicago project, and I haven't had an opportunity to vote against the theater, I feel like it's consistent with my votes, so I'll be voting no.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, if not, Alderman, excuse me, Clerk Reed, could you take the roll, please?
Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Suffertin.
No.
Alderman Revelle. Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Okay, so A34, authorization to renew a line of credit for the Howard Ridge and West Evanston Tax Increment Finance District, passes the city council 6 to 0.
No.
Excuse me, excuse me, I'm sorry, I've got seven members here tonight. It passed 5 to 2. Thank you. Okay. Okay, I think that was the only thing that was pulled off the agenda, correct? Everything else was either held in committee or to be continued to a date certain. I'm going to move to call of the wards. I'm not used to moving this quickly here in the evening. So let's go ahead and start with Alderman Ruth, excuse me, Alderman Fisk, tonight. Call of the wards.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Happy New Year to everyone. Hope your holidays were good. That's really all I have to say. Good discussion tonight. Glad to see everybody back. And Wally, I loved your Christmas card. Thank you.
Great. Alderman Braithwaite?
Also, Happy New Year to our residents and staff, and looking forward to a really fun and prosperous 2018.
Excellent. Alderman Nguyen?
Happy New Year to everyone. I would like to make a reference. I'm not certain which committee it should go to. It would be for the staff to develop a bird-friendly ordinance that is to promote building practices in Evanston that are bird-friendly, meaning, I know the Environment Board is beginning to work on this, but I know that some folks have talked to me about this, and I think a lot of cities are doing this now, and especially because Evanston is on the migration path. It's really critically important that we have a bird-friendly buildings here in Evanston.
City Manager, do you want to make a comment?
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, Alderman Suffertin has also raised this issue with regarding the bird-friendly buildings. My recommendation, my recommendation to him would be to Alderman Nguyen is that perhaps the appropriate reference would be to the Environment Board, and to ask them to consider this, and then have that come back to planning and development.
All right, okay. Let us do that, then. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, City Manager. Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Thank you. I'd like to say congratulations to Bishop Carlos Moody and Mother Moody and the entire Faith Temple Church for 61 years of ministry here in the 5th Ward of Evanston, and also to encourage everyone to visit the Shorefront Exhibit on the second-floor lounge, and also invite the ward out to our monthly ward meeting on January 18th, 7:00 P.M. New location is here at the Civic Center, Room G300. Transportation is provided from Jacob Blake Manor and Ebenezer Prim Towers, to and from them both, and we have a very important agenda, so I'm encouraging all to come. In addition, I have a referral for, I guess, is there a transportation committee?
Transportation and parking.
So we are becoming terribly congested. It takes me like longer to get out of Evanston than it does to get down Lakeshore Drive to work, and I'm wondering if we have any micro-transit options that are at the bus and train stops. So if the committee or staff, I'm not sure who the appropriate body would be, could give us any information on what options we have there, and consider options if we don't have anything in place. Phoenix, Arizona, I believe, partnered with Lyft. They have some options. I'd be happy to share some things that I've read that have worked in other communities. And then also to MWEBE, I believe we've discussed it before, but I want it discussed, that we can consider a reimbursement program to have the option to pay directly to the institution, because we still have underutilized that fund, and maybe that's been the barrier, the upfront cost. So if we could have that at MWEBE. Thank you, and Happy New Year.
All right, thank you, Alderman Ruth Simmons. One thing, because it's just related to what you said. In terms of Faith Temple and Bishop Moody, they're also having a special service to honor the, and celebrate the police department and the fire department of Evanston on Friday evening, January 19th, at 7:00 P.M., and that's at Faith Temple, which is 1932 Dewey. So they're pretty excited to have the community to get, come together to celebrate the fire and the police. Alderman Suffertin?
Just want to wish everybody Happy New Year, and thank everyone in the 6th Ward who decorated their houses so beautifully, particularly the Flatland family on Marcy, who put a lot of work into their... who put a lot of work into their presentation and raised money for Kurt's Cafe.
It was an internet sensation, the Flatland House. Alderman Ravel?
Happy New Year to everyone, and I just want to express my appreciation to Alderman Nguyen for her referral about the bird-friendly ordinance for Evanston. I know our bird, our birding community has been doing a lot of work, and so basically the, it should be relatively straightforward to get something ready for us.
Great. Alderman Rainey?
Thank you. Happy New Year, everyone. Also, on the 18th of January, Thursday, is a community meeting in the 8th Ward, having to do with various development projects, and look forward to seeing everybody at the Levy Center. Excuse me.
Great. Thank you, Alderman Rainey. City Manager Bobquitz, do you have anything?
Yes, I have a question for the council regarding calendar. We have scheduled a 3rd Monday meeting next week. The 3rd Monday is Martin Luther King Day, so we had planned to have a meeting on the 16th. I do not believe that there are matters required to be considered by the council, so would recommend that the council consider not having that meeting. So does anyone object to that? So we'll go ahead and, so we'll go ahead and not have that meeting, so the next meeting of the council would then be on the 22nd. And then the council has previously scheduled a special meeting for January 29. I think we had talked about starting a little early at 6 o'clock. Is that still the council's pleasure on the 29th? Or make it 7 o'clock?
I think 6 o'clock sounds good, on the 29th.
All right. And then lastly, the 3rd Monday in the month of February is President's Day, a holiday which the City of Evanston does not observe. District 65 and District 202, however, do, so the school is out that day. I think there would be matters before the council for that meeting. So I want to poll the council, is there any issues with moving forward with that meeting on Monday, the 19th of February? All right, so we'll plan on a number of items then for Monday, the 19th of February. Thank you.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes. Mr. City Manager, I heard Alderman Fisk ask about the meeting we have scheduled for 7:30 AM on Friday morning. Is that being changed?
I don't know. I think the meeting that you're referring to is the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance Committee. I think there was a request at one of the committee meetings this evening to revisit that, so we will do that. I think the, we're trying to balance the urgency to get that committee up and running. That was the first available time that everyone on the committee could attend. I guess there were some concerns if that was the most optimal time for members of the public to attend, so I think we may just have to balance between that, and so we will do that. Mrs. Leonard, I think, has already left for the evening, but I think that was the discussion of the committee.
I just want to make sure I don't miss that. Yeah, I just...
I imagine you'll hear from staff in the morning.
Okay.
Okay, great. All right, thank you, Mr. ...
Thank you.
We have executive session?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, yep. Let's see, Alderman Nguyen, could you lead us into executive session?
Yes. Pursuant to 5 ILC statutes, 120/2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding collective bargaining, litigation, and minutes. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are 5 ILCS 120/2, subsection A, subsection C, subsection 2, subsection C, subsection 11, and C, subsection C, subsection 21, and are set forth as follows. Do I read the exceptions? Two subsection C exceptions. A public body may hold closed meetings to consider the following subjects. Two, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. Subsection 11, litigation when an action against, affecting, or on behalf of the particular public body has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal, or when the public body finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the minutes of the closed meeting. Subsection 21, discussion of minutes of meetings lawfully closed under this act, whether for the purposes of approval by the body of the minutes or semi-annual review of the minutes as mandated by section 2.06.
Great. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of recessing to executive session?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, this meeting is recessed. Thank you, everyone, for coming out.